Okay, good evening, council members and good evening Altadena. I'd like to welcome you to the 2019 first Altadena Town Council meeting. Today is January 15, 2019. I would like to call the meeting for tonight to order. The time is 7:04 PM. For pleasure of allegiance, I will ask one of the council members. I say, anyone volunteering? Okay, Councilmember Malone.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Malone. Item number 1.2, that'll be roll call.
Good evening, everyone. Councilmembers, please acknowledge your presence when you hear your name. Antonio Bersera.
Here.
Aaron Cheetah.
Here.
Justin Robertson.
Here.
Billy Malone.
Present.
Diane Markison.
Excuse absence.
Dorothy Wong.
Here.
Gloria Seneca.
Excused.
Jeff Simmons.
Here.
Jennifer Lee.
Here.
Akuri Izimi.
Present.
Patricia Sutherland.
Here.
Reggie Wilkins.
Present.
Sandra Thomas, excused. Sylvia Vega.
Here.
Victoria Knapp.
Present.
So we have three excused, and that would be 13, so we have a quorum.
Okay.
13 here.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Jones, and item number 1.3, that will be Councilmember Sutherland.
For the agenda, the Executive Committee met on January the 8th to set the agenda and approved it as presented. Copies are on the piano, if anyone didn't pick up one on the way in. And a couple of small changes on the agenda. Under Community Reports, for Altadena Library Stella will not be reporting, but Terry Andrus from the Library Board will present in her place. And I made a small mistake on 4.4. Jane Brackman, if she gets here, is from the Historical Society and not Altadena Heritage. Are there any other corrections or additions?
A couple of short items.
4601, Census Track Report, 4601, okay. Anything else, anybody? In that case, I recommend, I move that we accept the agenda as amended.
Okay, you have heard the motion to accept the agenda as amended, properly seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposing? Any abstention? Okay, that is the agenda for tonight. On Section 2, Officers' Report, the Chairs' Report. I have a few announcements for this evening. Instead of taking those announcements at the appropriate time, I like to make them now. The first one that I would like to, first of all, welcome, community, we always appreciate your present at our meetings. The registration for the fences and hedges. On December 19th, the county sent someone, there was an opportunity for registration on December 19th, so that's passed already. Now, the next meeting that will take place right here at the Community Center will be on January 29th. Then the next, it'll be from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM, so January 29th. The county will help you with the registration, guide you, so please take advantage of this opportunity from the county. The next one will be on February 23rd. It will be from 9:00 AM, I'm sorry, it'll be from 9:30 AM until 12:30 PM. So that's on February 23rd. And the final one scheduled by the county will be on March 13th, and that'll be from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. So please, please, the deadline for the registration is April 1st, 2019. This is not April 4th. The county really wants your noncompliant fences and hedges to be registered per the CSD that was, that the community participated in drafting, which was approved by the Board of Supervisors, so please register your noncompliant fences and hedges. The other announcement that I would like to share is for the 2019 homeless count. This has become a major event for the county because of the number of homeless individuals in the county. This is from former Councilmember Judy Matthews, and I'll read it as she has written it. As of Sunday, January 12th, 70 volunteers signed up for Altadena Count. And still reading, "I am pleased with the response from the community. Special thanks to Altadena community, community teams such as Greg Stanton, Doug Cauliflower, and Ann Lanson, of course, the Altadena Town Council Community Relations Committee members, Mr. Elliot and the Altadena Town Council for volunteering. She was looking for 60, and 70 so far. The more the merrier. She called me and said, please announce it and let the community know that they are welcome to still sign up. The more hands, the better and the faster that we can get it done." She also noted here that there will be wonderful refreshments for all volunteers. So that is for the 2019 homeless count. It is taking place on Tuesday, January 22nd, for our area.
Can I ask the Chair a quick question?
Sure.
Based on the information you have, just that you were mentioning that the more the merrier, and right now they're at 70, according to the LA County website, right now 70 is the limit. So can you sign up on a waitlist, or do you know of any other information on that?
I do not know.
Yeah.
So if the limit is 70, then...
According to the LA County website, the limit is 70, and if you said that, 70 right now, that means that, yes, we need more people, but I want to make sure that, you know, to sign up correctly, do they go onto the waitlist, do they, you know, I mean, is there another? Anyway, that was all.
Okay. Go ahead.
Can I make a suggestion? Yes, there are, there are 70 that have signed up, so you cannot register on the website for Altadena. You could always email Judy and ask her if you came to the, you know, to La Alta, can you be used. I also was checking it today, and I did notice that if anybody is interested in, like Lock or Center or Arcadia, they're way down. We've done, we did really well in getting all 70 people by about three or four days ago.
That's a good point. A lot of people don't show up. So if you...
Right.
If you can't sign up, then it's good to show up.
Or if you feel like, you know, going to one of the other places nearby, you know, that's fine, too, but otherwise, I'd recommend just emailing Judy.
Okay. Thank you.
Even though she didn't say this here, but it says there's wonderful refreshments for all volunteers, so what I will recommend is still, since you cannot sign up, you can still send her an email and let her know that you are interested, and the email that I see here is D as in Delta, J as in John, Matthews@att.net. Again, D as in Delta, J as in John, Matthews@att.net.
Could I, just for my own information, could I just double check? I know a couple people on the Town Council that signed up, but is any, obviously, you didn't get in in time, but is there anyone else on the council that has signed up for the homeless count? I'm just curious.
I have.
Jennifer?
Okay.
Oh, good, okay. Great. We have a car.
Okay, good.
If anybody else in council doesn't get in, I've done it for the last three, four years, I'm happy to do another community if somebody also wants to join me, so just email me offline, and we can maybe figure something out from our neighbor community.
Okay, so those are the, actually, let me also take care of a couple other things. For the, I know we talked about it so many times, the Measure A. We wanted a representative of the council to help us as the county navigates what we're going to do with respect to that. That is the Parks and Recs measure, where Altadena is getting approximately, I believe it was 138,000 every year. The county, they really want us to participate, so the Executive Committee unanimously asked Councilmember Cheetah to chair the Ad-Hoc Committee. And so we met with him, and he said he'll be glad to do that. So publicly, Mr. Cheetah, would you let the council members know also that you accept to be the Chair for the Ad-Hoc Committee for the Measure A?
Yes, I'm accepting this.
Okay, well, let's give him a round of applause. That's a lot of work.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. So, and you let us know once you have picked up a few people from the community that would like to participate. We know that you'll be working with Mr. Estrada and all the other people involved with Parks and Recs. Okay, the other item, so let me just make all those comments, and then we will go from there. We know that the election, council election that comes up in June, we wanted to make sure we make all those announcements ahead of time. So I'm also glad to report that Councilmember Lee has accepted to chair the Election Committee for 2019. So again, publicly, Councilmember Lee, does that work for you?
Yes, it works for me, thank you.
Okay, likewise, let's give her a round of applause. Okay, that is, that will be it from me. So moving on to 2.2, Vice Chairman's Report, Councilmember Sutherland.
Well, it will certainly be nice and short tonight. As I see that most of the people I see here already know about comment cards, so if you do have comments to make, the comment blank comment cards are on the piano. Just hand one to, if you care to fill it out, hand it to one of the people at either end of the table. That's it.
Okay, thank you so much, and... 2.3, Recording Secretaries' Report, Councilmember Jones.
Councilmembers, you receive the minutes for the months of November 20th, 2018, and December 18th, 2018, with a request for additions and/or corrections. All additions and corrections that were received have been incorporated into the minutes. Are there any additional additions or corrections at this time? If there are no additional additions or corrections, I move that the minutes of November 20th, 2018, and December 18th, 2018 be accepted in final form and posted to the website.
Okay, so you'll be seconded, I hope both of them, because we need to take it separately, if you don't mind.
Oh, we need to do both.
Okay, so, thank you for that. The, you've heard the motion for the November 20, 2018 minutes, and properly seconded by Councilmember Knapp. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, anyone opposing? Anyone abstaining?
Abstaining.
Okay, we have one abstention.
Two.
Two.
Jennifer.
Jennifer, okay, so two or three, okay. So three abstentions for November. Okay, December, for December 18th, 2018 minutes, motion moved and properly seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposing? Anyone abstaining?
Abstaining.
Two abstentions. Thank you so much. Treasurers' Report, Councilmember Lee.
The balance is $2,633.86. We rely on donations. I'm going to be passing around our can. I'm going to pass the can, so please donate.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Lee. Correspondents' Secretaries' Report, Councilmember Wong.
Thank you, Chairman. At this point, I have nothing special to report, other than we will definitely be working on updating the website in 2019. So if anyone would like to get involved, please contact me. You can find my email address on the website. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wong. Okay. Section 3, Public Safety Reports, California Highway Patrol, Officer Cooper.
So I have a couple things. First thing, as you guys have probably heard, Officer Uloa, who was your community officer, has been replaced by Officer Norton. So I believe Officer Norton came in a couple months ago with Mike Uloa, so she's going to be taking over the position for the unincorporated Altadena area. So she should be here starting next month, she'll be at the meetings. As far as events, we had the Christmas Tree Lane in December, we had some changes to it. I know we expanded it a little bit and had some trucks with the help of the Sheriff's Department. I think as far as traffic was concerned, it went pretty well. As far as upcoming events, on February 16th, we're going to have the Black History Parade that starts out on Fair Oaks Avenue north of Woodbury Road at 10:00 AM, and that's going to run southbound into Pasadena's area, with the help of the Sheriff's Department as well. We're going to take care of the traffic until it gets into the city of Pasadena, and then the city of Pasadena takes it over from there. With the rain out, we just want to make sure that we're slowing down and taking our time, and there's a lot of crashes today, so just make sure that, you know, you got your wipers working well and good tires, and just take your time going where you need to go, because the roads are slick. For the month of December, we had a total of 19 traffic collisions. 12 were property damage only. We had one hit and run. We had six collisions with injuries ranging from minor to moderate. There were three that were DUI-related, and arrests were made on those three. And as far as citations, there were 54 citations that were issued. Of those, 13 were for excessive speed and 12 were for stop sign violations. And that's all I've got, unless anybody's got questions for me.
I just want to make a statement.
Okay.
I was at, the other day, I was at Einstein Bagels.
Okay.
And picking up breakfast for the family, and I'm not going to mention the name, but it was one of your partners, your coworkers, came in, in the breakfast, and they were, we had a discussion about, they were just on a car chase, somebody doing 100 miles an hour, and that car turned around and started shooting, and they ended up being in a shootout. And there we were, having breakfast together. So I'd like to say a huge, big thank you, because we don't always appreciate what you guys go through every day. I just drove to the bagel place. He had been through a whole incident, keeping us safe before we even got there. So sometimes we don't always understand everything, and I just want to say a big thank you to you and all your coworkers. Thank you. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from council members?
Just this, did you have to ride your motorcycle in, or did you get to...
You know what? I have a hard time not riding it, so I got up, and it wasn't raining very hard at my house, and I was going, I was looking at it in the garage, and I made this wise decision to leave it in the garage, and I brought my own car. Good thing, or I'd have a wet ride home tonight. So, that's it. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Okay, 3.2, Altadena Sheriff's Station, Captain Stuckey.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Okay, so first, I would like to introduce Sergeant Steve Bush. Sergeant Bush is going to be your new Community Relations Sergeant out of Altadena Station, and he's standing in the back, so let's welcome Sergeant Bush.
Okay.
He will be replacing Sergeant Sandy Crosswhite. Sandy now worked and transferred down to our Sheriff's Office. So any questions regarding community relations issues, just call and ask for Community Relations Sergeant Bush. For the month of December, if you look at your statistics that were given out to you, the first thing probably that pops up is, we did have three rapes in the month of December, and I must let you know that on all of those rapes, the suspect is known or was named, so it's not like we have some rapist that's running around Altadena. And those are still active investigations. Then the next item that kind of pops up is when you drop down to larceny, grand theft, petty theft, and that includes theft from vehicles. So we had a total of 17, which is very high for the area. And of those, five of those incidents involve theft from unlocked vehicles, and that's something that I usually always talk to you guys about, to make sure that you don't leave anything in your car, and then once you depart from your car, to lock your vehicles. Two of those incidents involve equipment that was lawn equipment that's been stolen. So I'll share with you guys, if you guys have a lawn service person that comes out, let he or she know that when they offload their equipment, and then usually they do the front yard first, but when they go into the backyard, to please secure all the items that they leave in the back of the truck, because we did have two incidents regarding lawn equipment that was stolen from them. So let's secure those. And then a majority of the things that were stolen were things that people just left behind, like maybe you came into the community center, we're just going to use an example, and then you walk away and you left your cellphone, and when you come back five minutes later, your cellphone is gone. So that's considered like a theft. Or ladies, let's be real careful, we're in the grocery store, that we don't leave our purses unattended. So there was really no pattern besides the incidents regarding unlocked vehicles and the stolen lawn equipment, but that was kind of high in that area. We don't usually rank that high, but it was Christmas time, and as I always tell you, that other people like to shop and take your stuff. But please, let's remove all of our stuff from our vehicles, and let's always remember to lock our vehicles. So I'm going to kind of give you some highlights for crime that occurred over the whole year of 2018. So violent crimes. Violent crimes are considered homicides, rapes, robberies, and aggravated assaults. Over the year compared from 2017 to 2018, we were up 33%. So in 2017, we had 63 incidents, and in 2018, we had 84 incidents. And our largest increase was our domestic violence incidents. So domestic violence is normally an incident that occurs inside the home, and just as a reminder, if an argument becomes heated, to take the time, and I'm talking to the public, to take the time to step away when you're arguing with someone. So that's where our greatest number of increases were. Our property crimes, which include our burglaries, larceny theft, grand theft, and arson, they were actually down overall 17%. So overall, our part one crimes and our violent crimes combined, we were down 12.6% over the last year. So crime in Altadena is trending down. And then over the five-year, violent crimes was down 16%, and property crimes were down 23%. So overall, part one crimes for a five-year period was down almost 19%. So we have been trending down over the last couple of years. And I know that 33% sounds really high, but overall, we are on the downswing of crime. So continue to be vigilant. You see something, say something, and always give us a call. Some of you guys probably are inquiring about the incident that occurred on Friday. So we had a victim who was driving eastbound on Palm, and he was being followed, and at some point, five to six shots came from a vehicle that was following him. The victim was not struck, and this is an active investigation, and it's not being classified as a gang incident. So that is an active investigation that we are covering. And I did send some information to the Chair to share with you guys if there was any questions whatsoever. And then the last thing that I'd like to announce, if you guys don't know, effective March 29th of 2019, I'm going to be retiring after 34 years and one month from the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. You can clap. It's been a great career, and I want to thank not only my Town Council, but everyone in the town of Altadena for welcoming me in over three and a half years ago. I have thoroughly enjoyed my stay here in Altadena. I've thoroughly enjoyed my 34 years with the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, but I've been contemplating retiring for about a year, and it's just kind of like it's my time. I won't, say you won't see me, but you won't see me as often. Because I have made some friends up here that I still would like to keep in contact with, but it definitely has been a pleasure being your captain of Altadena Station. So I want to say thank you.
Thank you so much.
I'll have one other thing. We do have one Sergeant, Sergeant Tom Crosswhite is going to be retiring, and we're going to have a very small ceremony. He's our scheduling and training sergeant. Many of you guys may have not met him. He mostly worked day shift in patrol, and then he was in our scheduling and training office. So he'll be retiring. So I have, he's retiring at the end of this month, and then I have Sandy... So I have, he's retiring at the end of this month and then I have Sandy leaving. So hopefully when we have what we call our next sergeant breakup, I'll end up with two additional new sergeants at our station. So again, thank you guys. Okay?
Any, any questions for, okay, go ahead, Councilmember Knapp.
Good evening. First, I will say thank you so much for your service to this community. It's been a pleasure to work with you and your staff. Rolling back just a little bit to the shooting on one eleven, you said that it's, did it start on East Palm? I know that the shooting occurred at Ten Noble and Loma Alta.
So I take it as it, he started driving and then the incident actually occurred up in that general area.
Okay, so the victim was not struck?
Correct. His vehicle was struck.
His vehicle was struck and then one of the, there was a home in that general?
That was struck.
Okay, but there were no bodily injuries?
Injuries to humans, correct.
Okay, alright. Just trying to confirm that it was obviously a big deal in that area.
Right. Any shooting is a big deal.
Any shooting is a big deal. And does the victim live in this, in that area? Was he on his way home? Do we know?
He wasn't on his way home, but I believe that he does live in Altadena.
Okay, okay. Thank you so much.
Any further questions for?
Mine was very similar.
Okay, Councilmember Malone?
Mine should be quite a simple question. I, I often from time to time and recently, I've got a couple of contacts that, from residents that have asked me about hypodermic needles when they find them on the street with their kids. You know, they're out walking their kids, they're on the street, they're on the corner. What is the appropriate form of action? I mean, they said they reported to the sheriff, but sometimes depending on who's due to this date, not for me, but they said that they don't really get much positive feedback from the sheriff's station. But what would be the most, what would I be able to tell somebody that? Should you clean them up? Should you report them first? Should they be looked at? Should the sheriff drive by afterward? What would be the appropriate form of action to tell somebody who comes across that scenario?
So if they, I would tell them if they have a pair of gloves, they can pair, take a pair of gloves and dispose of them. We used to have a dispose dispensary outside of our station, but we don't any longer. And I also tell people that if they have to use hypodermic needles because diabetics and other people that have to use a needle. Some of your drugstores do have dispensaries and then some of your larger hospitals do have dispensaries where you can take them too. We can come out and, and get them. Or the, the citizen can just dispose of them themselves.
I, I think more of the concern is, is the activity that took place for them to be there in the first place is, is one of the concerns of the neighbors is who's doing it and why there?
Right, and they probably should call and just let us know that that's what they found and we, someone could have done something illegally injecting themselves or someone could have just dumped them out. We don't know and we wouldn't be able to find that out.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, Captain, don't leave yet. The town council in recognition of Sergeant Crosswhite's service to this community has a presentation and unfortunately, he's not here and I've had conversation with you. So the most appropriate place to issue that will be here. And so I'll read it into the records and then we present it. Okay, so this is certificate presented to Sergeant Thomas Cross, Crosswhite. Altadena Town Council Narrative for Resolution, our certificate for Sergeant Thomas Crosswhite. Whereas Sergeant Thomas F. Crosswhite has chosen to retire from his position with the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, his Patrol Division, Altadena Sheriff's Station after more than thirty years of service to the County of Los Angeles on January thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. Whereas Sergeant Crosswhite began his career with the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department on February seventeenth, nineteen eighty-eight, Academy Class Number Two Forty-Six. Whereas as Deputy Sheriff, Sergeant Crosswhite was assigned to Peaches, Honor Rancher, Lomito Station, North County Correctional Facility, Crescent Valley, Altadena Station, Santa Clariter Valley Station, and Court Services West Bureau. Whereas on August twenty-first, two thousand and eleven, he promoted to the rank of Sergeant where he demonstrated with the highest standards of law enforcement in the following assignments, North County Correctional Facility and Altadena Station. Now therefore be it reserved that the Altadena Town Council does hereby commend Sergeant Thomas F. Crosswhite for his thirty years of outstanding public service to the County of Los Angeles and his commitment, professionalism, and dedication to duty. Best wishes for a happy and rewarding retirement. And is signed by myself, Curie Zem, Chair, Altadena Town Council.
So thank you so much. We're going to have a very small luncheon for him and I will present that on behalf of the town council. So I thank you for taking the time to issue him a citation.
All right, so you're receiving on behalf of Sergeant Crosswhite.
Thank you. All right, thank you so much.
Okay. Oh, you want a picture? Okay.
So should we come up here?
Okay.
For, excuse me, for the month of December, we had a total of three hundred and fifty-one responses in Altadena. Two hundred and eighty-three of those were for medical calls and two hundred and twenty-three of those patients did get transported. We had seven fires. We had, three of those were structure fires. First one on December third, on Rubio Crest Drive was an electrical fire in the bedroom. On December fifth, on Holliston, we had a bathroom fire, accidental, but was caused by a curling iron that was accidentally left on. So don't leave your curling irons on. And then we had a contents fire in a bedroom on New Year's Eve on Altadena Drive. We had one chimney fire, which was confined to the chimney, and a couple of trash fires. And that was it for the fires. Once again, in December and mostly on December twenty-eighth, a lot of power lines down. So, and then we had six traffic collisions that the fire department had responded to, including two that were versus pedestrian and one that was a person trapped. And that is it unless there are any questions.
Any questions from council? Okay, thank you so much.
Well, that was easy.
And we see you in February.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to, on the agenda to Map Your Neighborhood, Ms. Gibson?
Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. I'm really happy to be here on behalf of Map Your Neighborhood, Altadena. I'm hoping this will be our most prepared year ever. And I don't know if any of you have heard about it, but KPCC has sponsored a podcast called The Big One. I see a couple of nodding hands. Yeah, it'll, it'll, it'll make you take it seriously, so hopefully that'll raise awareness a bit. In any case, our primary, I wanted to let you know, we have a new chairperson. I told you about Steve Reagan bowing out after his commitment, he's got other fish to fry. We have a new chairperson named Ann Nolan, that's Ann with an E, N-O-W-L-I-N. You'll be meeting her pretty soon and she'll sometimes do the updates for Map Your Neighborhood, but she's doing a terrific job. Our primary goal in 2019 will be to follow up with the people who came to our trainings and indicated an interest in meeting with their neighbors on their street. So we have about a hundred of those. So, and we always come out, if, if it's desired at all, we come out and, and help people to conduct those meetings. So you can see that with a hundred of those coming up, we have backed away a little bit from the trainings at the Town and Country Club. We'll be meeting there three times this year instead of six. And our first one will be March seventeenth and it'll be from four to six-thirty as usual. And that'll be our first one of the year rather than the January one that I told you about when I was here in November or whenever. So when I get a digital flyer, of course, I will send that to you for widest possible distribution. In the meantime, you might be interested, if you find someone who's really interested and really wants to get going and they want to know more about it, of course they can get in touch with us, no problem. But if they want to do a little background research, they could go to the website. I'm going to give you one that I just think is dynamite and so inspiring. It's Mount Washington, Jessica, because I think Jessica is the name of a street in Mount Washington in LA, dot org. So Mount Washington, Jessica, dot org. No, just MT. Thank you. Very good. Yeah, thank you. MT, I'm sorry. And if you hit the Preparedness tab, it'll bring down all the things. But it's a really inspiring website about a, a small part of the Los Angeles community that's really pulled together and I, I think you'll find that really enticing. And then if someone was to, or you, of course you could go to YouTube and see the videos too, but they come in eleven chapters and on YouTube, they're all mixed up, so that's not so great. You can also go to Washington State Map Your Neighborhood, but I think Mount Washington, Jessica is much better. And then your people should get in touch with us and, and we'll work with them. But otherwise, we'll see you in March. Any questions?
Any questions? Okay, thank you so much. Community reports, first one will be Altadena Library. Do we have?
Terry.
Okay.
Terry Anderson.
Mr. Anderson?
Andrews.
Andrews. Mr. Andrews.
Terry Andrews, and I'm happy to be here tonight to talk to everybody about the doings at the Altadena Library. It's been a busy end of the year and beginning of the new year for us. It's old news, but those of you that weren't at the Christmas Tree Lane lighting ceremony, it was quite an event. There were just literally thousands of people there. The library sponsored a few booths and the Friends of the Library, which is one of our, our agencies that helped us raise money, had a book sale there and it was really, really a wonderful thing. And then this last week on Saturday, we had the Second Saturday Concert, which is a continuing series, and the Texas Playboys played there. They did a, I'm sorry, the Pasadena Playboys, they did a very good job and it was a, a well-attended event. And that same day, we kicked off another program that's really related to the library and it's called One Thousand Books Before Kindergarten. And on this rainy Saturday, we set up a petting zoo. Danny's Farm came out and we got a pretty good crowd. I stopped by to say hello. And the object of this is to have preschoolers and toddlers read with their parents or caregivers a thousand books before kindergarten, which sounds like a pretty daunting task, but I think this has a pretty wide start now, kind of a nationwide start. It's a program that includes prizes at different reading levels to give caregivers and to keep them engaged with the children and, and reading. If you're interested as a community member, you can sign up your children at the, at the library, the six hundred Mariposa address library, the main branch, and get started on that. A little, a little statement, our children's library staff asked me to read here and I'll give it to you. One Thousand Books Before Kindergarten, which is also known as One K B Four K, Letters and Numbers, is a program designed to promote shared reading with babies, toddlers, and preschool-aged children. The goal is exactly what it sounds like, is to read a thousand books with your young child before they start kindergarten. Shared reading, that is, reading aloud together, is the most important, most crucial key element to developing strong early literacy and a good pre-kindergarten foundation. As a library, we want to promote this activity and to help families realize how great a job they are doing, raising young readers already. So when we look ahead now to January, already halfway through, but you'll notice if you look at the calendar on our library webpage, that every day, you know, as usual, is filled with events for all ages. And if you've looked at the website today, you will have seen our new website that just got launched. We took it from an outsourced website to an in-house website. It's been under development for a long time now and kudos to Chloe and Christopher and the others with the staff that got this together. I'm making this announcement not only to congratulate our staff for doing a terrific job of bringing that complex thing in-house, I know you've been through this yourselves, but you know, also that we're, we're able to design the entire thing on our own. There's going to be some glitches, you could expect that as you know, but we're working through those pretty quickly. Another item, a little less serious, I guess, is that, an anecdote, is that we, we went to get some permits not long ago, some of you may have heard this, and found out that six hundred East Mariposa, which is the main library address, is not registered to us. It was to, I want to say it was to a church. So we had to do some digging and we finally got that cleared up. Now we are officially a library and not a church. For a moment there, I had a little anxiety about that, but that has been cleared up. So things are going well. Stella, our interim director, was not able to be here tonight, I'm stepping in for that. And so about all there is to report on current news. We do have our library board of trustees meeting, which will be a big one, on the twenty-eighth of this month, Monday at five o'clock at the, at the Library Community Center. Any questions?
Okay, Councilmember Knapp?
Will that be the first meeting of the newly seated board? Everyone sworn in?
No, it will not.
No, you met in December?
We met in December, yeah. We had one regular meeting and a special meeting, so the new board, good question, has gotten their feet wet already. And the next meeting, there's a big gap because we met in early December to, to the end of January, which is our normal rhythm, the end of the month, was because we got sworn in, the whole board basically got sworn in and then since we were all together, we just made a meeting out of it that day.
Any further questions from council? Okay, go ahead, Councilmember.
I want to announce it a little bit later, but the Chamber of Commerce is having a Citizen Business of the Year awards and installation ceremony coming up on February the first. And I know usually the library board comes and represents the library. And I, I don't know if anyone's reached out to you yet and if so, who would be the new board that would reach out to?
Consider us reached out to and I'll make sure that we get somebody there for that. It's on February the first, you said?
February the first, yeah.
Okay.
The information can be found on the Chamber of Commerce website. You should be, you should have gotten some invitations by now. I just checked.
Okay, great. Alright, thanks all.
Thank you. Any, okay. LA County Parks and Recs, Mr. Estrada?
Hello, good evening. We had a really busy winter time during the Parks and Rec season. We kicked off our first ever winter Parks After Dark. It was kind of a test pilot, if you want to go that way with it. Normally, if you're familiar with the Parks After Dark that we do at Loma Alta, it's only during the summer. And so this year, we did try it in the winter. It had its glitches as a lot of us kind of foresaw, as a lot of people went out of town and then the weather was really bad, especially if a lot of the activities were outside. So going for the 2019 year, we will still be doing the winter pad. So, going for the 2019 year, we will still be doing the Winter Pad in December and January 2020, but we're looking at reformatting it and changing it up a little bit, just to kind of make it a little more accessible for people that are coming out, because during the Parks After Dark, we also did our toy giveaway, which was very successful, and then we also did our Snow Day, which was probably the best-attended event that we had out of our Parks After Dark events. We had several hundred people that attended. We had three large slides and a snow play area. We had hot dog on a stick that came out, and all this money was funded through the Fifth District Supervisor, Catherine Barger, and through also probation and public health. So, it was a collaborative event through LA County, and it was very successful in that regard, where we had a lot of people come out for the large events. So, that might be something that we look at going into our Parks After Dark for the end of this year. The Snow Day, that was part of the 33 parks throughout LA County that do the Snow Days. We have it within the San Gabriel Valley, and then also in LA County and Ello Valley as well. So, I believe this was the fifth year that they have done it in Altadena. So, it was a wonderful event, and we're glad that everybody from the Altadena community and Pasadena community come out and have a good time with their families, and it was a great time, and I was there the whole time, and I saw some of the council members who were there as well. So, I'm glad you guys were able to come out. Loma Alta Park, we have several programs that we are currently running. On Fridays, we do our volleyball clinics, and that is a fee of $20, and it's for youth, and it goes all the way until June. So, come out if you would like to participate or have your children participate, it's for ages 8 to 16. We also have a jump rope class, and that is for kids and adults, and that's currently going on right now, if you want to learn to double dutch or double under, single rope. It's a great program. We're also doing our basketball league, it's starting up at the end of this month. We still are taking registrations, and we are partnering with a couple other parks within Los Angeles County, but if you would like to register your children or your grandchildren or know people that are interested, we're still taking registration at Loma Alta. Loma Alta Park also does have a teen program, and we're looking to expand it, and we're also going to look to have some college tours to take our teens to. I was a big proponent of doing that, and learning and education at my old site in Duarte, and we would take the kids to Cal State Fullerton, USC, Cal State, what was it, Cal State LA, UC Riverside, I'm sorry, UC Irvine, and then we went to USC, UCLA. So, we're looking to do some of the similar things as well, get some public speakers and get some more career aspects for these kids in the Altadena area. The Loma Alta Cheer Program is going strong. The girls are at over 60 girls in the program, and they compete this Friday in Duarte, at my old park, and they will go against some other participants within LA County, but this is just to prep them for their final competition next Saturday in the City of Industry on January 26th. As you mentioned earlier, we, Loma Alta is also hosting the Homeless Count, so that'll be on the 22nd, and we're ready for that as well. We have some staff that have gone to the training to actually do the Homeless Count and be participants in that, and our department has trained them, and our site will be ready come that day. At Farnsworth Park, they do have an after-school program, and they also have the Pickle Ball, which is still going strong with our ambassador Lynn, and it's Tuesday mornings from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM, and Thursday evenings from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. The program is going really strong, and we're looking to expand it even more once our construction on the tennis courts is done. That's coming up in the springtime, so we're excited about that. If anybody's interested in looking at what our parks have going on, you can go to parks.lacounty.gov, and that does show all of our park programs, not just in the Altadena area, but all across Los Angeles County. Our department is looking to expand and enhance our registration website, so that way you can register your children or yourself for any of the park programs. Currently, you can do that, but at the end of the year, we'll be going into a new system. So, our department is really excited about that. It'll be a lot easier for the community to navigate and for us as well. So, that'll be taking place in about a year from now, so probably like this time next year, it'll be going full force. Just a little bit of information for you guys to be aware about is that our department has done a realignment, and the Altadena area will no longer be under the East Agency. Currently, it is under kind of both, we're in limbo at the moment with Altadena and La Cressena area. Right now, we have Loma Alta, Farnsworth, Charles White, Cressena Valley Park, and Two Strike Park that are, were under the East Agency, but now we're under the North Agency. I don't know if any of you are familiar, but we had some representation from them several years back, that we were under the North already, and we switched over to the East. So, that's taking place, that has already taken place, but it'll be a full effect probably by March. So, we have new, a new deputy director that will be over us. His name is John Gargan, and he is over us, he's been with the department now probably about like seven years. So, we will no longer be under the direction of Mercy Santoro. So, that's little tidbit news for you guys, so in case you're wondering or need to get in touch with our deputy director, it's not going to be Mercy Santoro anymore. So, they are still taking some information for us, so some of the information is still streamlined through them. We still go a lot through, have a lot of communication with them still until the transition is complete. We're saying, we're anticipating March, so I will keep you updated next meeting. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions for?
Yes.
I just wanted to make a comment about the Snow Day. My grandchildren were here visiting from England, and they want to come back and move to California. Because of the snow, didn't they? They had so much fun, and it was so cold out there, and they didn't want to go home. So, it was really fun.
Yeah, it was a wonderful time. There was so many people that, this was their first time seeing snow or even having the access of snow. I did about five Snow Days this year with the five different parks, and so, just to see the different communities interact and how they just enjoyed it. And it's something that we will continue to do for next season.
My granddaughter went home with a map, and the little one wouldn't wash her hand for three days because it had a princess painted on it, so she took her bags with them. So, it was really worth it.
I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Okay, any?
Well, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you so much, and Happy New Year. Okay, Chamber of Commerce?
I just, I just found out at the beginning of the meeting that I'd be presenting a report for this. So, what I want to actually comment on is the up-and-coming February the 1st Citizen Business of the Year. It is, it is a great opportunity to celebrate with your fellow community members and fellow leaders of the community. I've been going for several years. I did accept the, a new treat, by the way, if you really want to go. I just found out that the master of ceremonies is somebody called Billy Malone. So, you know, in case that's a draw, I don't know. It's February the 1st, it's at the country club from 6:00, 6:00 PM, till it finishes, which is around 10:00. There's going to be a live auction for the Marion Lee Warshlager Scholarship Fund, and that live auction is always quite a, quite a good fundraiser. Please come. Tickets you can find on, on the Altadena Chamber of Commerce Facebook page or link, you can go through there. And the, for those who don't know, the Citizen of the Year this year was actually a couple, so citizens of the year, and Ed and Carrie Myers. So, I'm sure you know, you've been dealing with both of those. And the Business of the Year was, was actually two businesses, because they're combined, which was websites and Meredith M. So, anyway, I'll see you there.
Okay. Thank you so much for the report, and moving on to item number 4.4 for the Historical Society, and Jan Brackman?
Hello, and thank you for inviting us. We haven't come and done a presentation at Town Council. Pat had asked us if we would sort of tell you a little bit about what we're doing and who we are. I always start out by saying, we're not Altadena heritage, and I know that all of you are thinking that we are Altadena heritage, and people mix us up all the time. What I say is heritage preserves the future, and Altadena Historical preserves the past. And right across the patio here, we have an 800-square-foot archive. We have tens of thousands of documents and photographs and maps in there. We are the oldest nonprofit organization in Altadena. We've been operating since 1936. And because it's, because it's raining tonight, I wanted to tell you a little, a little story. In 1969, 29 inches of rain fell on Eaton Canyon in three days. The flood took down the Eldorado Restaurant, the local watering hole. The beauty of Altadena is that a lot of people still live here, and so, they come in and they bring us things and talk to us about what they saw. But I will tell you, there were many other floods, the 1938 flood that came down through Rubio Canyon, took the entire golf course down into Pasadena. It took out multiple houses on Boulder, on Page. We have phenomenal photographs of this. We have thousands of clippings that talk about the floods, the fire, the Lavinia Fire in 1934, I think, that swept right across the front of the range. Cobb Estate, Mr. Cobb's house, he saved it because he was an old forester, and he knew how to build a house to protect it from fire. These are all things I'm telling you because you probably don't know that we come out and we do programs. All you have to do, we do programs for schools, for clubs, for events, we'll bring a PowerPoint, we will talk about something that your group is interested in. And what we do is we call from our files, we put together a program, and then we come to you, and it's really fascinating. But we want to get the community more involved with us, and so, we're very involved in outreach right now. So, if you want to find out more, it's altadinahistoricalsociety.com. And if you go to our website, just email us, let us know what you're interested in, and we will make sure that we put something together that's really interesting. Yeah, questions?
Councilmember Knapp?
I didn't think I would be speaking at all tonight, and here I am. I happen to also be the PTA president at Altadena Arts Magnet, so would a program be good for elementary school-age children?
Yeah, we would put together something that's specifically for elementary schoolchildren.
Okay.
Just to give you an example, one of the things, we have kids come in who are supposed to learn how to do research, and usually mom comes in and does the research, and the kids sit at the table. And one of the things we were thinking about doing as an outreach was to teach kids how to use an archive and to actually do the research, because it's really fun, you know? Kids shouldn't be afraid of history. So, we are here to teach kids, and yeah, we'd absolutely love to come and talk to your group. In fact, most of our volunteers are retired teachers, so.
Love that.
Yeah.
Same for Elliot.
Okay, any further questions from council?
Okay, thank you.
Well, you certainly gave me history, so maybe I'll be looking across the hall.
Well, yeah, okay, and don't get too wet out there tonight.
All right.
How are the hours that?
Oh, we are open Monday, Tuesday, and Friday from 9:00 to 1:00, and we're also open the first Saturday of each month from 2:00 to 4:00. On those Saturdays, we have special presentations. Two months ago, we exhibited all our maps, and then, a week ago, Paul Ayers, who you may know, who's very an advocate for the mountains, came and talked about his collection. So, we will always have something that, where we focus on the collection for those Saturdays, so, yeah.
Do you archive the collections that you speak about, so that, I know you did one on the Altadena's history with the Tournament of Roses. So, even though that was in the past, can someone come in and sort of like look through that specifically?
Yeah, absolutely. Those PowerPoints we keep, and then, anybody who wants to come in and look at them or, you know, use them or whatever, yeah. We're, that's one thing we're really good at, is, is holding on to things.
Great.
Yeah.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you for having us.
General public comments, and I believe we have one.
Golly gee, yes we do. Karen Gibson, are you here? I don't like it when we have two in one night. It's not quite right. You might have noticed, I'm speaking now with my NBBA hat on, and that stands for Neighbors Building a Better Altadena, Grassroots Group. Monica Hubbard posted a notice on Facebook that you might have seen, but just to reiterate for everyone who's here, we're having our general meeting this month on the 26th of January, and we're featuring Assemblyman Chris Holden, so I hope you'll all come. Now, it's going to be a half hour earlier than usual, so we'll have check-in at 8:45. The meeting will start at 9:00, instead of our usual 9:30. He'll be with us for about 45 minutes, and he'll give us a legislative update first, and then he'll take questions. And we're so fortunate that Val Zavala has agreed to moderate that period for us, the question-and-answer time, so it'll be really interesting for everybody. You can come on out and have your questions answered. And then, what we like to do is do a roundtable, hear from local groups, see what they're up to. Jane, it'd be great if you came. The meeting is not here, we couldn't get the date. It's this time at First Presbyterian Church over at 2775 Lincoln, that's at the corner of Harriet, and the parking lot is off Harriet, and there's usually plenty of parking, if not, there's plenty on the streets. So, we hope everyone will come. 8:45 check on, check-in, January 26th. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
That's all of the public comment.
Okay. Section 6, no special presentation. So, Section 7, committee reports, land use. Councilmember Marcusson, it's under the weather, but just a couple of things that I want to bring to the community's attention. The New York Drive Project is starting next week, the 20th, yeah. So, you should have seen the, the signs, alerting people that, that street, the project is starting, so find an alternative route. Okay, and, you know, something about February 5th. Something else about February 5th, what?
I didn't mean February 5th, but I think I could add that there was no land use meeting in January. There will be one in February, and for those of you who are interested, Palm Heights does not have a, a meeting scheduled yet.
Okay, yeah, that's what I have for February 5th, so the next land use committee, since the January 1 was on January 1st, so that did not hold. So, February 5th is the next land use committee meeting. All right, Education Committee, Councilmember Lee.
Hi, I have two announcements. One is our next Town Hall will be February 27th in this room, and we have a special speaker, Mo Hyman from College Access Plan. She's quite knowledgeable about our public schools and what colleges are looking for these days.
Education Committee.
What?
That's the Education Committee.
Yes, oh, what did I say? I didn't say?
You didn't say.
I didn't say, Education Committee. Town Hall is always 7:00 to 9:00. Yes, in this room. Yes, in this room. And on January the 25th, switching gears here, Elliot has their second Science Night. Last year, there were upwards of 800 people visiting. They have numerous groups, Arroyos and Foothills Conservancy, we're launching a rocket. We've got JPL Scientists, Theodore Payne Foundation, Mount Wilson Observatory. It's just an amazing, amazing group of people. Pasadena Water and Power will be there, so there'll be all these tables set up in the main hallway and outside, and it's free. So bring your family, bring your kids, bring your parents. It'll be really, really fun. January 25th, 5:00 to 8:00. Yes, we have, there's so many community people are going to be participating in this. It's, oh, I shouldn't use that word. It's a huge event.
Yes.
And that's my report.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Lee. And moving on to item number 7.3, Councilmember Wong.
Thank you, Chairman. So happy 2019, everybody. I am reporting for the Safe Streets Committee. We're working right now to sort of strategize on what we're going to do in 2019. So the first thing up is to save the dates. Where did it go? February 23rd, Saturday, we're going to have a Safe Streets Town Hall at the main library from 10:00 AM to 12:00 noon. That's Saturday, February 23rd. We will have our second annual Safe Streets Town Hall. And Saturday, April 27th, we're looking to organize, again with the library, a spring walk and roll Altadena. So we're going to get people active, healthy, and thinking about active transportation. So pencil those dates in. And then this next Thursday, I think it is, January 24th, from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM, Metro Los Angeles is hosting the Next Gen Bus Survey, and they'll be surveying, it's kind of a, you don't have to be there at 4:00. It's going to happen between 4:00 and 7:00 at the Pasadena Senior Center, and it will address, you can actually give your input, it's really exciting, on what you think of different routes or what you want to see as it comes to, as it relates to mass transit. So it does address all of the lines that Metro and Pasadena Transit offers that comes to and from Altadena, and also the Metro Express that actually takes you to, I want to say Burbank and North Hollywood, the different sort of bus rapid transit lines, and also Foothill Transit. So it's really exciting, and I want to organize a bus trip if anybody wants to meet up. We can take the bus from Triangle Park and find our way over to that, and they are giving away some free passes, Metro tap cards, and you can learn more about how to use mass transit. Any questions?
Any questions for Councilmember Wong? Okay, Councilmember Robertson.
I just wanted to point out that Dot did a great job today speaking before the Board of Supervisors when the Catherine Barger's motion regarding scooters and a potential pilot project, how the county's going to try and regulate scooters. Dot spoke up on behalf of the Safe Streets Committee and did a great job.
Thank you.
She said that they're looking forward to the county figuring this out, and we see it as a viable transportation option, and she supported their efforts.
Right, because we had our Safe Streets meeting where they came, Bird came to give a presentation. Who was there? Karen was there, Ann, and so anyway, any questions? Let me know. You guys should come to the Safe Streets meetings. We're going to decide on what our date will be for our monthly meetings coming up. That's all. Thank you.
A question for you. The walk and roll, is that for?
Which one?
The walk and roll. Is that set up already?
No, everything is planning, thinking, however, we can engage our community to move actively.
Thank you. All right, Election Committee, Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. I am the chair of the Election Committee this year, and if you would like to join me, I would love it. I welcome it. I need it. And we're also looking for people from the community. I'd like to pull together three to four people. Please contact me, and contact me soon. That would be great. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you so much. Item, Section 8, 4601, Census Strike Report.
We've met a couple of times with the residents around the Mount Lowe Parkway, which is Mount Lowe Drive between Maiden Lane and Mount Curve. And then we had a meeting with the county, both Public Works and Parks and Rec, organized by Susie Niemer. They have come back with three different options for sort of cleaning up and modernizing, you know, and reclaiming that area. That, we've got a few questions on. I've had some interactions with, back with county on them, and we'll be going back to that, the residents group in the next month or so to get their reaction and then provide some feedback back to Susie. There are, as I say, three options, and I think there's one, one that's kind of in the middle, literally middle of the road, and probably the preferred approach. So that's progressing. The second item relates both to 4601 as well as 4612 and 4613. County's starting a tree trimming and tree removal activity. Basically, it's Altadena east of Lake. West of Lake has been going on for a while. There are 2,863 trimming jobs to be done that have been identified and 58 trees to be removed, both mostly, I think actually all broadleaf trees, either dead or diseased in poor health. And one of the things I want to point out is that the county will replace those trees if the residents sign up to provide water and kind of take care of them for the first couple of three years to get them, get established. But they have to fill out a form and request it. I'm going to get copies of that form and make sure that, you know, we go, you know, I'll enlist your help for, from 4612 and 13, but I want to make sure that we go to each of the addresses, you know, where they're getting a tree removed and, you know, solicit their submissions of that form to get the, get trees put back in. It's actually a service that Public Works does for anyone with, given some constraints on placement and so forth, but if you have a median strip that you'd like to get a suitable tree planted, Kennedy will come in and do it for you, as long as it meets, as I say, it meets some constraints as far as distance from power poles and things like that. And that's really it. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Okay, Councilmember Knapp.
Also from 4601, just piggybacking on Jeff's update, we are in the last phases of the resurfacing project of Allen Avenue between Altadena Drive and Washington. So they have been putting in handicap access points at many of the curbs. Rain has delayed things a bit, but we're nearing the end, and there's all, there's a, the stretch of Allen Avenue will be repaved as well as a bit of Mariposa east of Lake. Is that right? West of Lake. Mariposa only goes west of Lake, right? Yeah, okay, I just confused myself, but yes, there's a little portion of that, too. So anyways, the project is nearing its end.
Okay, thank you so much. I believe that's really it for us tonight, so I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. Who seconded it? Okay. All right, so the time is 8:24.